Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Robin Schmidlin. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 416, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into temporary construction easements in lieu of eminent domain with the owners of certain property in 18th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, known as 318 Arlington Avenue and 320 Arlington Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes. Bill Number 417, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Woolslayer Way Beginning at a Point on a Northerly Right-of-Way Line of Woolslayer Way to its Westerly Terminus in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 418, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the CMU 5th and Clyde Residence Hall in Campus Hub at 4735 5th Avenue. Bill Number 419, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the CMU Forbes and Beeler Residence Hall, 5087 Forbes Avenue. Councilwoman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 420, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17th, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until June 23rd in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 421, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with Point Park University to allow students under teacher supervision to provide creative and strategic services on a volunteer basis to the city on an ongoing project-specific basis, such as for marketing or the 2020 census outreach. Bill Number 422, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Littler Mendelson, PC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,112.05 for Professional Legal Services Regarding an Employment Matter. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 423, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a five-year professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925. Bill Number 424, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement with Smith Detection for upgrades to two Sabre 5,000 detection devices in an amount not to exceed $10,280. Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 425, Resolution Appointing Sarah Kenter as Director of the Department of Permits, Licensing, and Inspections of the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 426, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh's Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending March 31st, 2020. That concludes the reading of the legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. Meeting announcements, council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. The clerk please call them.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Ms. Rowe Connor?
There.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Kell Smith President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you.
Reverend's here. Reverend's here. He's on mute. Yeah.
Okay. Nine members present.
Okay, thank you. Remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And today, please keep former city councilmen, county councilman, state rep, Bill Robinson, in your thoughts. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamations and we have a will of counsel to be presented by Councilman Kraus.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 427. Now therefore, now therefore, it was all that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby decrees 16th, 2020, to be William Russell Robinson Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 428, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh dishear by declare June 16th, 2020, to be Reverend Dr. James Henry McLamore Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And we have a will of counsel, Bill Number 429, and been requested to read it in its entirety.
Okay, can we take the proclamations first? So then we have discussion on the will of counsel of Councilman Kraus would like? Okay, so all in favor of the passage of the proclamations? But I?
Aye.
We get motion to approve? In a second. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those proclamations approved. Now can we move on to the Councilman Kraus's will of counsel?
Whereas, June 12th, 2020, marked the fourth anniversary, one of the worst mass shootings in recent US history. And whereas, 49 people lost their lives and scores were ender during the rage and homophobia-driven massacre which took place at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando, Florida. And whereas, a truly despicable move, the current presidential administration decided to dishonor June 12th by choosing to stay solemn remembered as the date to announce the finalization of rollbacks targeting civil rights protections granted to LGBTQIA patients under the Affordable Care Act. And whereas, these protections, which were introduced in 2016 by the Obama administration, expanded Section 1557 of the Affordable Care Act to redefine sex discrimination so as to include termination of pregnancy and gender identity, which is defined as one's internal sense of gender, which may be male, female, neither, or a combination of male and female. And whereas, this council categorically rejects this president's malicious actions, which were made in the spirit of divisiveness, bigotry, masquerading as religious exemption, and hate perpetrated by othering the diverse LGBTQIA community. And whereas, the actively seek to roll back the essential and hard-won civil rights, civil liberties granted under the law is to actively propagate and encourage violence towards the bodies of LGBTQIA individuals, especially black and brown individuals and trans women of color who suffer violence at already disproportionately higher levels. And whereas, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is elated to hear and wholeheartedly embraces the Supreme Court ruling issued on Monday, June 15th, 2020, which affirmed the interpretation of the Title VII statute granting protection from discrimination on the basis of sex to inherently include those who identify as LGBTQIA. And whereas, while non-binary, trans individuals are still not explicitly named as groups protected from discrimination, the United States Supreme Court has ruled that they are implicitly protected because this form of discrimination still requires one to intentionally treat individuals differently on the basis of their sex. And whereas, this decision is a monumental blow to this presidential administration's attempt to rewind the clock and transport this nation back to a time of Dior inequity. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby claims this victory and celebrates the lives and rights of the LGBTQIA community to live their lives unvetted and free of bigotry, hate, and violence. There is June 28th, 2020, Pride Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Will of councils approved. Councilman Kraus? Your mic is off.
Thank you. Yeah, if I could, please. Yesterday really was a monumental day for civil rights across the board for all peoples. As we look back at the Civil Rights Legislation of 1964 and the interpretation of the Supreme Court yesterday, and try as this administration may to harm and damage members of the LGBTQIA community. Each time he tries to do so, he reads, he runs into a roadblock and he ran into a very serious roadblock yesterday with the ruling by the Supreme Court of the United States led by a conservative judge appointed by Donald Trump that said that the Civil Rights Act does indeed protect people of the LGBTQIA community and that if our Republican-led state legislature does not have the guts to interpret the law as it's intended to be interpreted, then the Supreme Court of the United States yesterday did just that. And it will only be a matter of time until protections are extended in matters of housing and public accommodation. So it's a, it's a, it's a huge victory for my and our community and a perfect time to celebrate this during what is traditionally known to be Pride Month in the month of June. I appreciate the support of members and I ask our clerk if she could please send this not just to our state legislature but to our federal representatives as well as the President of the United States. And I'll open it up to anyone else who may wish to comment and my sincere thanks for the support of council.
Any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger? Your mic is off.
That was just me clapping.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
The other members?
Appreciate it.
I see no other members, so if you need to speak, just make sure you say something. There's too many people under the door.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, Councilman Kraus, for always making sure you're championing this cause and to make sure that you're raising such awareness. And I think that things have changed just in the years I've been on council with you and seeing how more people are embracing and talking and advocating and fighting together. So I just want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. It gives me great hope in the younger generation that is coming up behind us because it is, if you, when or since we are watching the protests taking place in the streets, it's being led by a generation that truly does believe in equity and equality and inclusiveness and to hate and bigotry and violence and racism. And, and we're seeing the changes that we are seeing because of a generation that is coming after us, that is leading the cause. And it gives me great hope in these very dire days.
Yeah, well, we need some hope right now. So I want to thank you. Yeah, I have a lot of hope and not only did I raise a lot of young people, but my kids are involved in some of the things you're saying now and they're friends. Matter of fact, Camille, who's organized some of the rallies or protests in our side of town, grew up in our neighborhood and friends with her family. And she got it from her mother, I can tell you that because her mother taught her how to advocate and fight. So I think she's done a great job. But I do want to say that I think that there's a lot of great hope in the young people coming up. But I think even the yet newer generation, the, you know, the ones like in their 18, their teens, late teens and 20s are even more amazing to me because they're kind and gentle and yet want change. And so I think they're probably be the ones that balance us all out. So with that said, we have a public comment now. And Madam Clerk, you'll call the speakers as it's time, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let me just, let me just say before that I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may or may not be, which may, which are or may be before council profanity and whatever will not be permitted. So I'll try not to curse. And then, may we have the first speaker, please? And please state your name and neighborhood for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm Robin Casper Oski.
Robin? Okay, one more time, Robin? If you're there and your mic is on? Okay, I don't see. So we'll go to the next speaker, please, and then we'll come back to Robin, just to make sure.
Next we have is Fred Francis.
Mr. Francis?
Hello. Is my microphone on? Can people hear me?
Good morning.
Good morning. How is everyone today?
Good, how are you?
Excellent. I wanted to make comments specifically regarding the resolutions regarding the Tree of Life Grant and the resolution regarding the grant from the Hillman Family Foundations. I wanted to say that, as a lot of you know, we are concerned about the level at which the police are funded. We are concerned about any attempts to increase that funding by attaching themselves, methods for themselves to obtain additional funding through things like partnering with the Better Block Foundation. When it comes to a resolution like this, we'd like to see all of that money go to the Better Block Foundation. It's unclear to me why a police department funded at this level requires things like grants. It's unclear to me why the money that is available via the Tree of Life Grant has to go to reimburse the city for overtime paid. Why overtime wasn't originally included in that giant bloated budget for that department? At any point in the upcoming days, months, weeks, years, I would expect there to be an incredible amount of scrutiny on anything that increases the level at which that department is funded. And I hope that you apply it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker?
It's going to be Nicole Hall.
Hi.
You need to turn on, you need to turn on one of your devices.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nicole Hall and I live in Pittsburgh's North Side in Spring Hill, same neighborhood as Bobby Wilson. Hello, Bobby. I am here to comment today on, also on the two grants that are on the docket. I think they're bills 385 and 384. I am, as many people are concerned about the overfunding of the Pittsburgh Police. And so, as you can expect, any monies that appear to be going back to the police department after you just allocated $200,000 something dollars to go from the police department to the Stop the Violence Fund to put, you know, money back into the police department. After that seems like you're just moving funds around. So I would like to, on behalf of my fellow citizens and on behalf of myself, ask that you make public the bills and the line items and the plans for spending of both of these grants before you move forward to pass them. Similarly, that brings me to the matter of defunding the police. I think that this is tied to these grants. I stand with the Black Lives Matter movement and asking my city council to defund and disarm the Pittsburgh Police. Considering, yes? Oh, sorry. Considering the state of the prison industrial complex today, mass incarceration, and the money made from taking away people's freedoms, we cannot move forward into a just future with the systems that we have. There are some resources that I want to turn your attention to. Pittsburgh is home to the abolitionist law center. There are people right here in the city besides them too. Organizations and community members you can turn to and listen to when beginning this process. Similarly, I ask you to look at the People's Budget of LA, Los Angeles. They have a model for giving money from the police department to community-oriented funds. They surveyed over 10,000 residents and spoke to them when drafting it. It calls for investment in housing, mental health, wellness, public health, and healthcare, which is even more important now during a pandemic. Just 5.7% of the funds in the People's Budget go to law enforcement and policing. Instead, 44.25% is allocated to public aid and crisis management. As someone who started my career in the disability field and I've worked in nonprofits for years, I can tell you that while the police seem to have limitless funds for riot gear, for all the tear gas we've been seeing used on protesters, for horses, which are very expensive, for dogs, there are people who are going without housing, without food, without mental health services right here in our city. And so I ask that you look carefully at how these grant funds will be used and consider where they should go, which is back into the funds that help our fellow community members and bring about social justice as opposed to increased state violence. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Elizabeth Labaz.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Elizabeth Labaz, as you mentioned, from the Highland Park neighborhood. I am also commenting on the Tree of Life Grant and the Hillman Grant. I believe first of all that grant funding should generally be reserved for 501(c)(3)'s and other organizations that serve the public good. Specifically, the proposed Tree of Life Grant seems outside of the publicly available details on the rules of the grant in regard to spending, application, and accountability. And in regard to reimbursing the police department and specifically the Special Deployment Division, I'm unclear on why we would be reimbursing a department for performing a duty it was specifically designed to do. Also, neither grant seems to include adequate oversight or accountability for spending. And more broadly, I join my other commentators in an overall concern about any further funding to the police department. I believe that funding should be significantly diverted from the police department and given to entities that genuinely increase the public welfare, which it is becoming increasingly obvious that the police are not designed to do. Thank you for your time and I yield the rest of my time.
Next speaker, please.
Miriam Desland.
Miriam? I don't see.
Okay, we have Sadie Powers. She's here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, members of city council. My name is Sadie Powers and I live in North Side. I have a few things to say about the items on the table concerning grant money to be allocated to the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. First of all, when researching both grants, both Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delicacy Tree of Life Grant and the Hillman Family Foundations, it is unclear what is meant by the phrase execute relevant agreements. What kind of agreements must be made in order to receive this money? Additionally, it is unclear where the Tree of Life Grant money would go. One source indicated that monies from the grant agreement shall be deposited into the City of Pittsburgh's General Operations Fund, while the fiscal impact statement states that the money is to pay back the Department of Public Safety, which includes the Special Deployment Department and the PVP. The lack of publicly available documentation indicates to me that this money is to be accepted without transparency or accountability as to how it's spent. Additionally, no news reporting on the Tree of Life Grant mention any mention of money going to the police. They focus mostly on Jewish organizations eating the victims' or families and working to heal community trauma. This tells me that certain departments want this measure passed with little or no scrutiny from the public. As for the Hillman Grant, Operation Better Block is doing really good work. But why is the money going to the police and not to this community organization? Why are the police the point of access for them to take advantage of this grant? Unfortunately, there is no line item breakdown publicly available, so it's impossible to see where this money is going. I also know money be accepted without a full understanding of where it will go and how it will be used. It should not go back into the coffers of the PVP, where I have no doubt it will be used to buy military-grade equipment to be used against Pittsburgh citizens. Also, the PVP's budget just increased by $10 million between 2019 and 2020 and they just negotiated a 4% annual pay raise for the next, every year for the next four years. So they are essentially not, they're not especially strapped for cash. We should be methodically reallocating the police budget to institutions and community organizations that actually need the money and will use it to enrich our city. How can we repair the world when we continue to fund state sanctioned violence? Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Eliana Beagle.
You're on mute. Hello? Yeah, okay, great. Hi. My name is Eliana Beagle. I live in the neighborhood of Friendship in District 7. Yeah, I essentially just would like to reiterate the points that have already been made by the other speakers. I'm similarly very concerned about how much funding is going towards a police bureau that seems to spend a lot of its time and money actively harming Pittsburghers. And I actually wanted to speak a little bit about my experience with the police so far. So I attended my very first Black Lives Matter protest just a few weeks ago, the protest antan on May 30th that's been described as violent and the work of outside agitators bent on destroying society. What actually happened, at least to me, my first time out exercising my First Amendment rights, is that I was pepper sprayed in the face by police while holding a sign above my head and chanting, "Hands up, don't shoot." The police threw a tear gas canister after tear gas canister into the crowd and I ultimately needed medical attention from a volunteer medic to flush my eyes with milk and keep me calm as I struggled to breathe. That night I couldn't fall asleep because my hands had minor chemical burns from the pepper spray and I had to keep getting up to submerge them in cool water to stop the burning. On May 31st, I went to my second protest, also downtown. This time, none of the protesters were hurt that I saw, but when an elderly black man using a cane, who appeared to be homeless and intoxicated, attempted to shake a police officer's hand, the officer in riot gear pushed the man with his shield and the man fell to the ground. He had to ask for help several times before any of the officers gave him a hand up. Although he didn't appear to have been injured by the fall, he did seem to be in need of medical attention. And one of the civil affairs officers on site said that they would call a medic. When an ambulance arrived, the man seemed to resist going with them. And eventually, I saw this man loaded into the back of a police vehicle, presumably having been placed under arrest at some point. On, on June 1st, I went to my third protest. All right, I'm almost done. This is the one in East Liberty that has been controversial as eyewitness accounts and video evidence of journalists, protesters, and bystanders. This is the one in East Liberty that has been controversial as eyewitness accounts and video evidence of journalists, protesters, and bystanders dispute the official police narrative. I'm yet another protester who will tell you that the Pittsburgh Police declared a peaceful protest unlawful for no reason and then began throwing tear gas and shooting munitions into a still peaceful crowd. I was tear gassed and shot in the back of the leg with a rubber bullet or some other less lethal projectile while running away. I will skip because I don't want to take too much time. I saw a man lay bleeding on the ground who I thought was going to die. Police did not stop shooting when we begged them to and told them that the man was very injured. In conclusion, the only outside agitators I've seen, the only ones who pose a danger to our community are the police themselves. And that is why I firmly believe we must defund and abolish the police. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
It's gonna be Dan Yablonsky.
Thank you, member. Dan Yablonsky, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yablonsky, okay. Dan, could you, could you turn your mic on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I had to run across the room to grab my headphones because I forgot that my microphone is broken. But hello, council. My name is Dan Yablonsky. I am the Communications Director from Pittsburghers for Public Transit. I'm here to speak on the vote that you'll be taking today on the expansion of the TRID area to allow the affordable housing money to be spent in new neighborhoods. But I'm here because the East Busway and the East Liberty Busway Station are the only established TRIDS in the state of Pennsylvania, and that is for one reason. Because the East Busway is the strongest performing transit asset in our county, asset in our county connecting millions of residents to locations throughout the county. It's the spine of our transit system, and East Liberty is the neighborhood at its core. I'm speaking today to remind council that the point of the Affordable Housing Fund that comes from this East Liberty TRID is to fund affordability near this county's strongest transit asset. However, I'm also here to remind council that what propelled urban renewals demolition of the East Liberty neighborhood was the pursuit of for-profit development and power aided and abetted by the developers, politicians, and city agencies in power at the time. What we need from city council and city leadership is the commitment and investment into alternatives for housing and economic development. That means investment in partners like the Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation, City of Bridges Land Trust, who are creating programs and options that are alternatives to this for-profit development model, creating long-term affordability in these neighborhoods, not these thirty-year time-limited investments like many of the developers are doing with the state funds available for affordable housing development right now. So, we are here because we know that strong transit is at the core of equitable economic development. So, we do encourage council to bring in a, an eye to development and make sure that affordability ends up as near to transit as possible, but also that developers, community partners, are looking into alternatives that provide residents, provide resources to residents, to black residents, and to vulnerable, poor residents that allow them to enjoy these neighborhoods as they develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alethea Sims.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Alethea Sims, President of the Coalition of Organized Residents of East Liberty and a lifelong resident of the Ninth Council District. I'm concerned with the council's vote with the expansion, concerning the expansion of the TRID as well as Dan. I feel that it's in the best interest of the low-to-moderate income residents of the city to have that TRID fund expand as much as possible instead of just limiting to one area for the use of a developer that does not do low-income housing. There are places in Garfield, there are places in, well, there's one development a couple blocks away on North Beatty that can use some of that funding to make housing more affordable. Since there is a shortage of thousands of low-income housing, I refuse, as I said, to say affordable, let's use that money to expand that, to maintain, to, no, not maintain, to create affordability for low-to-moderate income housing, for residents that really need it, to bring people back to the community that were displaced through the gentrification of East Liberty and surrounding areas, do right by people who need the money, and not to look at personal interest, personal gain. Put people before profits. And that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
You have a good morning. Next speaker, please.
Carmen Brown.
Morning, Carmen.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, good morning, Carmen.
Good morning. Okay, I'm Carmen Brown. I'm from Burgess, Burgess's district. So, you know, he always claims that people get on here not from their district. I'm from the district. And I want to speak a little bit about the TRID. And I, and I want to make sure, I had sent a letter out to everybody, and I hope everybody looked at it. I sent out, I sent, you know, a number of letters to council. But again, my plea is to expand the TRID. And I want to bring up the fact that I read something in the paper that Ashley wrote, and Burgess mentioned about Penn Plaza. Well, Burgess has not reached out to Penn Plaza. There was never a plan to discuss any housing for Penn Plaza. But what I did in the last couple of years is I had reached out to Rick Schwartz. And he's been, he's, he's assisted us, and a lot of the displaced residents have gotten them home. So, I've been working with Rick, like I said, a couple of years ago. And I have not been able to get Burgess's office, you know, so I don't know why Burgess keeps throwing around Penn Plaza like he's so concerned. He's not concerned about our community. You know, the dismantling of Penn Plaza was his fault. You know, he's the one that helped for the Gumber displaced a lot of these people. So, again, this seems like it's a personal interest for him. It's not about Penn Plaza. Again, I want to speak out again if Dan, Rick Schwartz is the one who's actually been helping with the displaced, with displaced residents. So, again, I asked the council to really look at the consent order, look at the language in there, as I spoke with a few of you off, a couple, about a week ago. So, I'm just saying again is that, you know, we need to get this, we need to have this expanded. We definitely need it. And, and like I said, Rick Schwartz has been working with us. I think he will continue to work with us. But I would plead to council to allow this TRID to be expanded as far as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Next speaker, please.
Mando Taylor.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, good morning, Rick.
Hey, good morning, council. I want to wish the City of Pittsburgh a Happy Pride Month and also call on, or counsel and other city members to take a moment on Friday, June nineteenth, to think about the significance of that day. I wanted to talk also about the TRID and to call for the expansion of the TRID. I also have, want to back up the previous caller to, again, make council aware that Councilman Burgess has not met with the Penn Plaza residents except that one big meeting in which the county executive and other ones appeared. He's never met with Penn Plaza residents, never discussed anything with Penn Plaza residents, never gave a bit of assistance to. The only assistance he gave Penn Plaza residents was escorting them out of, out of the neighborhood. I also believe as we live in these semi-revolutionary times that people have to begin to ask for positions on these boards and authorities. And I think council should take pause that there's not a single member of Penn Plaza who is on, who is a current member of that TRID board. And so, if you don't have anybody in mind as a former Penn Plaza resident, I certainly will volunteer my time and services as a member of that TRID. And so, I believe that the councilman wants to keep it in East Liberty because he has his eye on the Larmor section, which is by the only part of East Liberty that is left to do anything around housing. And even though those of us who live in East Liberty, who grew up in East Liberty, didn't consider Larmor to be part of East Liberty any more than Lincoln, Leamington is probably there. Everybody knows about, about our neighborhood. So, that's a contradiction there. But the reason I want to encourage council to particularly to expand this TRID and to begin to look at budget cuts to the police is that we have a lot of issues. We know now in the COVID nineteen that we're going to have a serious crisis in housing. We may see massive evictions coming. And as I said, in these semi-revolutionary times, we must sweep away the old. And the old model of housing in this city has not worked. It is not effective. It wastes tremendous amounts of dollars and does not house near the amount of people that it could house. And that's why it's going to be incumbent on council now to sweep away Ricky Burgess's and Keith Key and the urban redevelopment's model of housing that forces our people to rent for the rest of their lives and not build any equity and move into new innovative forms of housing. And one that's not so new is tenant-owned co-ops. And so, again, I'm asking council, when you see these kind of projects come up, when you see the councilman maneuvering to move us back into that old form of housing, please stop him in the name of our people. Please stop the mayor and urban redevelopment authority in the name of our people and begin to build the type of housing that people can find anchor and permanency, but they can also begin to build equity and have that sense of ownership. So, thank you, council, for taking my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next speaker, please.
Jennifer Haven.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Haven. I live in Friendship. First, Councilwoman Kraus, I wanted to thank you and council at large for your will of counsel. I just really appreciate your wholehearted support for LGBTQIA individuals because that hits close to home for me, and I'm going to be really proud to tell my children when I get off the phone of your support. I really do appreciate that. And also, I'm, I'm almost without words at this point because I'm so exhausted at your apathy for the rule of law. You know, we had, as I've stated many times, there has been a court order since 2017, and yet you're just now considering legislation to expand the TRID that was required by that court order. I'm also exhausted at the complacency of council in passing legislation routinely that you haven't independently investigated, that's not transparent, and you're just disregarding your constituents' concerns. I last came before you back in October of 2019, and I requested that you require an easement when you privatize the New Eva Street. It was a public street. Now it's going to be a private street. Councilman Burgess had stated that there was an easement. I told you that there wasn't, and there wasn't. But you passed it anyways. But for community groups spending thousands of dollars on legal fees and working very closely with the developer and with the city's law department, residents walking and using Eva Street wouldn't even be protected by a non-discrimination clause. That non-discrimination clause was ours, was ours, the community's. Our fears back then surrounded by the possibility that residents of color would be forbidden from freely using the street. And that need for protection is just so evident and so relevant right now, and it's so urgent when we see the protests and the responding police conduct. I, I, I'm just exhausted with that you pass things and you don't consider the consequences. I'm going to clarify really clearly. You pass legislation to privatize a public street that leads residents to access a city-owned park, and you didn't give the city residents an easement. We gave them that easement. We fought for that. So, again, when I ask you today to fully and completely review the TRID boundary expansion and the legislation that you're considering, consider it. Don't listen to what somebody else says. Look at the expansion yourself. Look at the TRID legislation yourself. I've given it to you. I've given you the court order. I've emailed each one of your offices. As it stands now, the TRID half-mile radius doesn't even include the properties on the west and north sides of Penn Plaza. It doesn't even include the entire Penn Plaza site.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jason Roth.
Hi, my name's Jason Roth. I'm a resident of East Liberty. I was one of the parties to the, to the consent agreement. And so, I was present when the expansion of the TRID was discussed at the consent agreement, you know, the extensive consent agreement discussions. And the reason that the expansion was included and agreed to by the city's law department, they were party to the agreement and to all discussion, as was the city planning department. The goal of this give-back by the developer to the TRID was to be able to relocate the displaced residents to Penn Plaza as close as possible to their former homes. But the half-mile boundary, as Jennifer just said, barely reaches the Penn Plaza site. Properties directly across the street from the Penn Plaza site on three sides are not eligible for it. There are empty formerly affordable apartments just up the block within sight of the Penn Plaza site that are sitting empty right now that could be redeveloped with TRID funds, but they're not eligible because even though they are, again, a few hundred yards from the Penn Plaza site, they're outside the half-mile TRID boundary. Meanwhile, all the way on the other side of this East Liberty, there are properties in Larmor that are eligible for the TRID funding. It's an absurd outcome that the money from the Penn Plaza developers could be used in Larmor but not just up the block. And this is why we negotiated the expansion of the TRID. It was very important to us that our former neighbors have the opportunity to become our neighbors once again. And it's very frustrating that, as Jennifer said, it's been two and a half years. Action is only being taken now, and we know that the odds are stacked against us. I've had discussions with the URA, and they say, well, you know, there'd be a whole planning process and blah, blah, blah. There's a big push to push this aside and give the money to development authority in place rather than expand the TRID, look at the best possible developments, the best possible uses of those funds that are closest to home for the Penn Plaza residents that we want back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's our last registered speaker.
That's registered speaker. Thank you. And now we'll move on to the press. Thank you, Madam President, for reading all the names and helping us through that. The next order of business is the presentation of papers. As, seeing the other speakers, presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Works. Councilman Cockhill.
Madam President, sorry about that.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill Number 416, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a temporary construction easement in lieu of imminent domain with the owners of certain property in the eighteenth ward of the city known as three eighteen and three twenty Arlington Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes. Bill Number 417, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Wool Slayer Way Beginning at a Point on the Northerly Right Way Line of Wood Slayer Way To Its Westernly Terminus in the Sixth Ward to its Westernly Terminus in the Sixth Ward, Seventh Council District.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of, um, Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 418, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the CMU Fifth and Clyde Resident Hall and Campus Hub, 4735 Fifth Avenue. Bill Number 419, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the CMU Forbes and Beeler Residential Hall, 5087 Forbes Avenue.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human.
No, uh, no new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 420, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until June 23, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of coronavirus. Bill Number 421, Resolution Authorizing the City to enter into an agreement with Port Park University to allow students under teacher supervision to provide creative and strategic services on a volunteer basis to the city on an ongoing project-specific basis such as for marketing for 2020 census outreach. Bill Number 422, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in favor of little, littler metalson's PC in an amount not to exceed $10,112.05 for professional legal services regarding in employment matter.
Councilman, you have a rule of counsel? I'm, uh, favor rules?
Yes, uh, motion to waive the rules of counsel. So Bill 420 here under final action today.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Will oppose, the bill will appear. Any discussion on it? No. It will appear later today on the, um. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 423, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a five-year professional services agreement with Cover Your Assets LLC for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925. Bill Number 424, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement or agreements with Smith Detection for upgrades to Sabre 5,000 detection devices in an amount not to exceed $10,280.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Madam President, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 430, Who Admits Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct Article Five Discrimination, Chapter 659 Unlawful Practices, Section 65903, Unlawful Housing Practices in Section 65904, Unlawful Public Accommodation Practices to prohibit housing and public accommodation discrimination based on gender identity and gender expression. Bill Number 431, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement or adoption of existing government contracts with E Plus Technology, Inc. for commodities and professional services for system critical adjustment improvements and upgrades to maintain the city's network functionality.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of counsel on both bills, uh, 430 and 431 so that they appear on tomorrow's agenda.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Motion, we have a second. All in favor? In discussion? In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the bills will appear on tomorrow's, uh, standing committee agenda. And myself, I have, uh, one appointment of Sarah Kinter, Director of PLI. I'm going to take them separately. And one communication, um, quarterly fiscal report. So we have the appointment of council, uh, I mean, Madam Clark.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 425, Resolution Appointing Sarah Kinter as the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections of the City.
Thank you. And this is a new appointment for a director and we'd, we'd like to, um, hold for an interview, correct? Or we have the opportunity to interview? Correct, uh, Madam Clark?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so do we need a motion or do we just schedule that?
We need a motion.
Okay, so can we have a motion and a second then to?
Second.
Thank you. And I, I just want to say that, um, I want to thank Councilman Wilson for bringing it to my attention today that maybe we should interview, um, make sure that we interview because this is a new appointee and this is a very important position and we're, it's a me, it's, in my opinion, it's an area that we struggle in and, um, in some places and getting results for our residents. So it'd be good to hear what the director plans on doing differently. So, okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, holding for? Interview? Yes.
Is, uh, Councilman Coghill, I just wanted to say I'm really happy that Sarah is being considered for that. Just in working with her over the past, you know, months, she's been really responsive. She gets right back to me on things. I think it's well deserved. Uh, interview process is fine, but I could okay her right now. She's, she's going to be a big asset. And I agree with you. It's very important. Um, you know, very important, uh, position because most of my calls come from PLI. Be able to get answers with her and, um, really grateful that she's being considered and hopefully going to be a new director. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Madam President, ma'am?
Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, just, uh, briefly, I'd like to build on, uh, Councilman Coghill's remarks. I, I believe she's a really good choice as well too, and I could very easily appoint her today. But the purpose of a, uh, of an interview really is to share her with the public at large because these issues around PLI are, uh, are, uh, everyday occurrences with residents that we, that we represent. Uh, and they, they need to, uh, to see the face of who will be heading that department uh, and to make certain that she hears loud and clear, uh, the, uh, the concerns that we deal with every day in terms of permits, licenses and inspection within our neighborhoods. And so, uh, I look forward to the interview and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? So I'm going to say she seems very nice. I'm, I'm not concerned about how nice she is. I'm concerned about how effective she'll be and what she'll change. And I'm eager to hear what she sees for the vision for the department. So I'm eager to hear from her. Thank you. Um, so we'll, we have a motion. We said, everyone's in favor? Holding for the interview? Okay.
Aye.
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 And then we'll, um, schedule with the clerk. Um, she'll work with the mayor's office to get, uh, get, uh, direct, Acting Director Kinter, uh, to the table. And we have one communication, uh, quarterly fiscal, fiscal report. Madam Clark?
Council President presents Bill Number 426, Communication from Kevin Flowers, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the Period Ending March 31, 2020.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to read, receive and file?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion's approved. We'll now move on to the unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? The next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety. Public Safety.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 411, Report of Committee on Public Safety Services for June 10, 2020, With an Affirmative to Recommendation. Bill Number 384, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Commission on the Crime and Delinquencies Tree of Life Grant to Reimburse the City for Public Safety Overtime During the Tree of Life Incident and the Rossville Trial and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $1,500,000. Bill Number 385, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Hulman Family Foundations to Support the City's Partnership with Operation Better Block to Support the Ongoing Efforts of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and Its Group Violence Intervention Program and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $100,000.
You've heard the reading of the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I, I, I would like to, to make a statement on a couple of the bills.
Please do.
Okay, sorry, I'm just navigating back to get the, the right numbers. So regarding, um, Bill 384, um, executing relevant agreements, um, to, and to allow for an agreement from the Tree of Life Grant to reimburse the city for public safety overtime. Um, I just want to state that, um, I, um, I, I'm very torn here because I hear what the, what the, what the commenters and what the public is saying about this. And I share concerns about increasing, um, our, our budget, um, of the police at this particular moment, but I also feel as if it would be a slap in the face to those, the family members of those affected by a tree of life who have been working to allocate funds that have come into the tree of life from various sources, from the public, from federal funds, and have been distributing those funds across the city in various different ways to, um, to reject that money and reject their choices. So, um, this is a difficult decision for me, but I am going to be voting on this today. I had a stand last week because I wanted to learn more. I, I'm going to be voting on this today, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I am, um, in favor of, um, the way that we handle our police funds. And, um, I have some major questions as well about the Public Safety Trust Fund. Um, there, I, there aren't a lot of details that I can, that I might, and my staff have been able to find about, the power for, um, uh, allocating those funds, um, the authority, um, what the training is used, you know, what spending on training is used for. There, it's very murky in my mind. So that's something I actually really wanted to dig into as a council. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to state that for today, this is something I will be voting on to respect the wishes of the families who are affected by the Tree of Life, um, shooting in 2019, 2018. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members?
Councilwoman, or Madam President, thank you. Um, I, I am also, um, doing as much research as I can with my staff on where the various pots of money are that the police, um, have access to. Thank you to Councilwoman Strasburger for mentioning the Public Safety Trust Fund, for example. Um, I am also told that this is reimbursement funds for money that was spent already, right? And so this resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to execute these agreements, I think we want to highlight two parts. It's a reimbursement for funds already spent. Now, true, it is still money that is coming in. And the 1.5 million, what council's action is today is to authorize the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to execute agreements. I believe it's probably still a matter of, um, conversation and there's some leeway of how those agreements could direct and restrict those funds. So I think we should continue to work with the administration. We heard public testimony today that I think is incredibly, um, important that these funds not be used for further militarization. They could very easily be used. Um, I'm assuming, unless we're told otherwise, that these funds could be used for the kinds of things that we hear public testimony daily calling for, for increased mental health services, for increased community services, for strengthening communities to defray the need for militarized police. So I think let's, let's talk about how this moves forward. This is just permission. And there is not, um, that we know, that we can see an actual agreement already written. Um, so let's just continue that conversation with the administration and see if we can satisfy, I think, both needs, both to accept graciously the funds that have been raised by community members for investment in, um, community safety, let's call it, and not just policing. Um, and see if there's some ways that we can, uh, make sure that this, these funds are applied in the way that we hear our residents calling for on a daily basis. Um, and I, I wanted to speak to the second legislation, which is a number I still can't see because my screen blacks out the numbers. I don't know why. Um, that Operation Better Block, we've had fantastic experience with and they're really coming from the, they, I think that the same, um, sentiment that we hear so much public testimony and hear the protesters calling for today in really investing in neighbors and in communities. And I'm sure, um, Councilman Burgess could speak a lot, um, better to this, but we've, we've been impressed by their work um, in empowering people in neighborhoods and, and that, that's the mission of their organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Any other members? I, I'm just going to say, you know, I hear what people are saying about, um, using our police budget in, in different ways with better results for the community, especially in terms of social services. But I keep, I'm going to remind us again that social services, the county, Allegheny County receives a lot of money for social services. And I think if we're going to start looking at things involving the police budget and social services, we need to look at both simultaneously. We need to also look at the school just because they're also calling, pulling out school police and doing other things in, in that area. And I mean, I've been reading letters from students all day long saying that they don't want us to take their school police out because the, the school police are actually, like for in my case, Kia Ingram, who does an amazing job at Bresheer, empowering young women, working with young, young students. Um, so much so that she started, you know, another group and people were telling me that there, there's a waiting list now for that program. So if you're going to take somebody like her out of the school and not replace it with something, um, and I don't know that you could replace her. She's just, her heart is what you can't replace. You can put in programming, you can't put another Kia in. And so, um, I think those are things that we really have to look at. And for me, when I hear people talk about nonprofits and giving money to nonprofits, well, I've had a lot of nonprofits. I turned into the FBI and the IRS. And one that stole 5 million, well, I can't, shouldn't say stole, one who couldn't account for $5 million for development in our area for two blocks in our area. And so we turned them into the IRS, the FBI, the IRS, um, it's my understanding, shut them down. So you, when you talk about, and we're now doing um, audits of our nonprofits right now because we're saying like, okay, there's some, some questions here that we need to address. So when you're talking about giving money from the police budget to people to do more in the community, you really have to have some real accountability. You can't just take the money, not have a real plan in place. And it seems to me we've, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of people talking about. I think people don't understand what our role is and what we have control over, what we don't have control over. Um, I wish that I could assure the kids at Pittsburgh Public Schools that we're hearing from, that we would work with them to help keep people like, you know, Ms. Ingram in, in place. Um, and yet at the same time, make them feel more comfortable in their school. I, I just think that there's a lot to be said and a lot of discussions. I think we're going to handle it in just a few minutes of a conversation here. I think we have to sit down. We do have the post agenda and a public hearing. And Madam Clark, if we can get those dates together, we'll work on those. But I talked with Councilman Coghill yesterday. We talked about having, um, both out in a place where it's, um, more i- in person instead of like through this, through this Zoom, uh, format so that we can actually hear from a lot of people and involve a lot of people. So we'll probably, we'll probably work on that with, uh, David Finer and Madam Clark, um, and then get a date to you this week on when those will be held. But I think that's the time we really need to discuss what are we doing with police. That we, we need to do something different and we want to see more services, but we also want, and we want to see some changes and more accountability. And nobody wants to. And nobody wants to see anybody hurt. I think, I don't think anybody disagrees in that. It's how do we get there? And how do we make sure that we're protecting people who really feel very afraid sometimes? And Councilman Kraus knows that I had a call from some seniors in his district that, that were fearful, of some of the things we're doing. So there's, there's calls across Pittsburgh. And I, and I do hear, and I, I want you to know, I've looked into almost every one of the emails that we've gotten. I looked to see where people are from. I looked up, you know, where they're coming from, where they're calling, where they're sending emails from, where they, where they reside, uh, and whether or not they reside in the city of Pittsburgh. And so, uh, with that said, I have a good idea of where this is all stemming from. So I just think that we need to sit down with people and, and come up with something that we're all more agreeable to. And like I said, that includes sitting down with our police so that we understand what we, when you talk about demilitarization, what does that mean? And what does that mean for us in terms of, um, what we should cut, what we shouldn't cut? And what is really needed? Because I know in the Tree of Life case, there was something that they used that looked like a military vehicle, but that, if they didn't have that at the time, they wouldn't have been able to stop that. So I think we've got to be very careful. And this is, this is something that, I don't think it's something political. I, I mean, I actually think, I wish in some ways we could separate the police department from politics because I really think we're not going to get the best result as long as we have a say in it because we all have different agendas, um, different political agendas. So any other comments? Okay, the bills have, okay, the, um, bills are already final action.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. So, uh, I just wanted to say, first of all, I welcome your post agenda. And you know, you said to me, I think the most common sense thing I've heard in the past weeks is the Pittsburgh Police, they need to be at the table with us, okay? Public safety, the administration, city council, all need to be at the table. I've heard, you know, I think we all agree in light of everything that's been going on, you know, that we need to make systemic changes throughout the police department, throughout all police departments, throughout really the country, uh, whether it be training, tactics, you know, procedures, um, you know, we're, we're all in agreement with that, I think. What I'm not in agreement with and what I've heard a lot over the last couple of weeks is a lot of, you know, anti-police rhetoric. And, and I got to say, you know, I hear people calling in today and talk about state sanctioned, uh, abuse, defund, abolish the police, you know, it, it really is offensive to me. I, these people are our neighbors. They're our friends. I personally feel our Pittsburgh Police Department did a fantastic job through, through all the demonstrations and through all the protests. Um, I know we had an incident out in, uh, Councilwoman Gross's district, which, you know, I'm sure we're looking into and perhaps that was a misstep. But overall, I couldn't be more proud of them. I think the mayor's done a good job through this. I think our police department has done a good job. I feel like in moving forward, whatever we do, we need them at the table. I mean, they are a partner with us. We have to treat them like a partner. I think too many people have been lambasting them, whether it's a tear gas canister or, or, you know, tactics that they use. We're going to look at all that. We need to look at all that. But we can't do that without the Pittsburgh Police and Public Safety at the table. I feel strongly about that. So I welcome your post agenda. I look forward to taking a leading role in this if I could. I do feel I have a really good relationship with the, and, um, different perspectives, so. So I've heard enough of the rhetoric about our police department and how they're abusing and, you know, um, using military-grade weapons, which they're not doing. So, so with that, you know, I look forward to the post agenda. I hope we can do it in person somewhere. I just feel it's more effective outdoors. Uh, we'll figure that out, but, um, I look forward to those talks. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? And then I'm just going to say this, Councilman Coghill, I don't have the relationship you have with the FOP. Matter of fact, they didn't endorse me, but I think I'm the only one on council. They didn't. But I will say that, that doesn't mean that I don't, with the rank and file do constantly. So I'll just say that. Not constantly, but in our communities. But no doubt, there's, there's things we need to address. Okay, the bills are now, uh, ready, wait, no, I'm sorry. The bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Kell Smith.
Hi.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Councilman Coghill presents bill number four twelve, reported to the committee on public works for June tenth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number three seventy-nine, resolution vacating a portion of Summerly Street from the southwestern corner property line of the Port Authority and said point of beginning of Pierce Street in the seventh ward, eighth council district.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, bills not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And move on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, uh, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents bill number four thirteen, report to the committee on land use and economic development for June tenth, twenty twenty, with a negative recommendation. Bill number two fifty-two, resolution consenting to an amendment to the L-Treat Planning Study and authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to take necessary action to seek necessary consent for, and if obtained, to undertake an amended planning study as a prerequisite to considering an amendment to the current East Liberty Transit revitalization investment district boundary.
Um, Madam Clerk, is this the bill that we need to, you need to make a statement? Okay, could you do that?
Yes, for clarity, uh, because the bill is before you with a negative recommendation, uh, just, uh, if you, your vote for the negative recommendation would be a yes vote for the negative. And if you're not for the negative recommendation, your vote would be a no for it. So I just wanted to be clear as you're voting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just discussion on the bill. So I'm just going to say something and I'm, uh, to respect Reverend Burgess, I, I'm trying to understand this, but I, I mean, I hear the comments from the speakers and it really, it hurts my heart. You know, my family, I tell people this all the time. They were displaced from the Hill District and, um, you know, and that's what I grew up with is, is more advocating for the people that were displaced. And I'd really like to know that there's going to be something in place that we can help people, and work with people, whether it's this or not, that we're doing something to really, I, I really feel like the people from Penn Plaza, I, and I could be totally wrong because I don't represent the area and I know Reverend Burgess does a lot for his area. But I can't help but feel hurt for them and, and painful. And I'd like to see something done, uh, where we're working to, to help those residents. And I respect that this is your district and, and, yeah, we need, we have to do, but I also want to say, I, I'd like to know that, you know, we have a commitment from you to, to try to do more in terms of working with the residents to bring about some, some peace around that situation.
Madam President.
Yes.
So, um.
Reverend Burgess, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, as you know, uh, those people who were displaced from Penn Plaza received, um, a significant, um, investment to relocate and a commitment to be the first back of the housing that we built near the core of East Liberty. The, some of the people who you, I have no problem with meeting with the, any residents or any community groups. Um, unfortunately, some of the voices that you heard, um, when they're not advocating for Penn Plaza, I have organized to remove me from office and to, um, have had a variety of personal attacks. So I tend not to, privately have conversations with people who are attacking me personally. I will have public conversations, certainly, and we've had mobile, pub, public conversations. But, um, um, what it takes and why this legislation actually will be helpful, we have to build more housing in the core of East Liberty to bring back the residents who were displaced. That's the best thing we can do. Uh, we've already offered, many of them have, most of them actually are now housed, um, somewhere. Um, and we've tracked where they're at. And in the new development that we hope to build in the core of East Liberty, they'll be given priority to come back. But, um, my heart hurts for them too. But, um, and so, yes, Madam President, you have my commitment to continue to work with them, the, um, organization, um, though it's collaborative in East Liberty, it's actually, which is an interdenominational, um, faith-based and community-based organization is working with, um, with, um, all the stakeholders in East Liberty. And so we are trying to create a process and to, um, you know, talking to the mayor about prioritizing investment in that core. So, you know, all these things are happening, but there are, um, some voices, whose, uh, concern is absolutely not necessarily the best interest of those residents. It's short, but, but simply, um, having some, some, you know, some problems with not being able to remove me from office politically. And so, um, um, uh, we will focus on, um, you know, rebuilding East Liberty. And, um, uh, three or four years from now, they will once again get their opportunity to choose, um, their elected representative.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? Okay. The bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Thank you.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Kraus.
No.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes six, two nose, extension. Bill passes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed.
For clarity, the, the bill actually fails.
It failed. Thank you, thank you. And now we have, Councilwoman's Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents bill number four fourteen, reported to the committee on innovation, performance and asset management for June tenth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number three eighty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with Workiva Inc. to provide a subscription-based budget publishing software solution for a sum not to exceed one hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars over four years and for the payment of cost error.
Heard the reading, the title of bills. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, bills not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes passed. Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number four fifteen, report to the committee on intergovernmental affairs for June tenth, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number three eighty, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for East Jefferson Street Townhouse at one twenty-eight, one thirty, one thirty-two, and one thirty-four East Jefferson Street.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Um, now I have one, we'll move on to the motions and resolutions. I have one meeting announcement and then we'll take care of Councilwoman Lavelle's bill. Council standard committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, June seventeenth at ten AM. To register to speak at the meeting, please call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight by nine AM, Wednesday morning. You may also submit your comments to the clerk's office via their email at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. And now, um, Councilwoman Lavelle, your bill.
Yes, the clerk can read bill four twenty.
Bill four twenty. Resolution providing for further renewal by the council of the city of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by council on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until June twenty-third in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of coronavirus.
You've heard the reading, the title of the bill. Any, just, any discussion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion to approve?
We don't need a motion, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Well, any discussion? I'd just like to know, Councilwoman Lavelle, could you get some idea when you talk to the administration about how much longer we're going to continue to do this now that we're in the green? I'm just curious why it's still needed.
Sure, I'll, I will speak with the administration about it. But I would just also remind people, even though we are in the green, we're still in the pandemic.
Right, but somebody did ask me, so I just want to make sure we have the answer for them. And, um,
Well, we need a vote on it.
Okay, can we, hey, I'm sorry, can we, do we have a, can we vote?
Yeah, we need a vote.
All in favor?
We need a roll call.
Do we need a roll call? I think we do this every week. I should know.
Yeah, it's a final action. It's a final action at this time, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
Bill has received a legally required number of votes as passed. Now we'll move on to, um, any other business from any other members? So can we have a motion to, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Madam President, may I make a brief statement?
Is it somebody talking?
Yes, it's Deb Gross. Can't you hear me? Is my connection bad?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to make a brief statement. I, um, have received now, um, we've taken a week or so to organize all the emails coming in about, um, police defunding. And I have, in the mailbox so far that we've sorted, there are still coming in two thousand, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine emails requesting the defunding of Pittsburgh Police. Uh, like Councilwoman Smith, I'm trying to go through them. I'm, um, kind of maybe opening every other one. I haven't been able to open everyone to see where they're coming from also. And I flagged, at this point, I can't count dozens, if not hundreds of the, definitely many hundreds from the city. Um, and it appears possibly several hundred from my own district. So I have a significant support from District 7. It's so, so many have come in. It's almost as you can expect and thinking about your own email inbox, nearly impossible to respond individually to 3,000 emails. So I've actually had people email me twice and say, why haven't you responded to my first email? So to those, to those constituents and concerned citizens, just know that we have not gotten back to reply to your email yet. But we are working on it and we hear you loud and clear, as I think some other council members do as well. It is, it is budget season and it is time to have this conversation. And we will have it in a way that we try to respond to the, I think, the spirit of the protests that we see to really take seriously how we invest in the people of Pittsburgh and in their safety and rebuilding communities. I know there are many members of council here who have worked on these issues in their own districts. And I've supported their legislation in the past to rebuild Pittsburgh neighborhoods and to strengthen Pittsburgh people. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and apologize to those of the nearly 3,000 emails who have not gotten a response back yet, but we are working on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Yeah, Madam President, I just wanted to reiterate, first and foremost, you know, for us to come up with any type of real solutions, you know, we, we need to talk to public safety in our place. And, you know, for me, I, I've been reading emails too. I've been getting more so, you know, support our police in my district. Now, whether they're targeting certain, I'm not quite sure about that. But most of the negative responses, when they talk about defunding of police, it seems comes from a younger generation. I think this younger generation probably doesn't remember Officer Shugo Kelly and Maylie when they rushed into the scene, when that animal Poploski was shooting and killing everybody. You know, I think we have to keep that in mind. I just want to make sure that Pittsburgh Police know I've got their back. You know, we need to have them at the table. To have any conversation without them is just kind of mute for me and, and really goes nowhere. So, so I look forward to these conversations and the many changes that are needed. I look forward to, you know, the, the police and the administration being at the table with these discussions.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? And so I'm just going to say again that we do want to work with, with everyone together. And I think we'll be able to do that. When Reverend Burgess introduced bills a while back, he'll remember that we really did a lot back when, um, with him, when he introduced some bills. And it was working together, it was bringing everyone together. So with that said, I think that we were able to do so much to help people. And it was, it was having to understand. I, I tell people all the time, I say, when I first met Brandy Fisher, she and I didn't get along, her, she and the FOP didn't get along. And now that we all get along. And so I just think that a lot of it is sitting down and having conversations. And there's a lot of people, and yes, they're young, and I think that, that to me, it's great. I, I hear from my own children, one is a police officer and one is telling me to fund them. So I have, I have both ends in my, I mean, I have my daughter in the middle saying, wait. I, I know where she gets that from. But with, I'll just say that I think that, that it's a conversation we need to have. I have a lot of respect, even though I don't, the FOP doesn't, may not, the, the union may not like me. I get along well with a lot of the FOP members and a lot of the, the administration, especially Chief Schubert, who I have a lot of respect for. And I think that a lot of these officers are doing a lot right now and working under very, very tense conditions. And yet I feel and I hear the pain that we're hearing, that we're hearing in the streets. And I think it's incumbent upon us to keep cool heads, real solutions. And I, and I'm confident that we'll do that here locally. I just hope they could do it nationally, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
Quickly, just quick, yeah, the Zone 3 Public Safety Council met last night. And one of the perhaps unintended consequences of the conversation of defunding police is to, is, is instilling fear in much of our senior population that somehow police are going to be unfunded and disbanded. And I just, I really want to take the opportunity here to say that that's not going to happen and that this council will work collectively and diligently to, to address serious issues within our police department and police departments across the nation and make the changes that need to be made to ensure that our police officers are indeed discharged to protect and serve. But I, at the same time, I, I really want to reassure our senior population to, to rest easy that we will, this two shall pass, we will get through this. We'll do the due diligence that's necessary to make certain that we, we do, that we welcome and incorporate the changes that are necessary, that need to be made. And at the same time, ensure that police officers are there and are available to protect and serve and that they can rest easy and it will be okay. Thank you.
Any other members? Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse any absent members to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned. Be safe, everyone.